Good morning, Huntington Matters. Hey, neighbors. This is June Margolin. Together with Jen Hebert, we are in our 2023 election Town of Huntington candidate interviews, which we do every year, highly sought after by our members. And you guys have submitted the questions. And so we're asking your questions. And you're going to get to know your candidates at the poll. Super important. These town positions are the ones that impact your daily life the most. So, you know, as opposed to presidential election, which is important. But these are the ones we need to really pay attention to and vote for what works best for your family. So today, we're going to talk to Jen Hebert. So Jen, thank you for running again. I know it's turn-your-life-inside-out time.
Yes, it is. Thank you for having me. And I really appreciate this opportunity because I couldn't agree with you more. I think local elections are really important. And I think the more opportunities that the voters have to find out about us, the better.
Yeah, agreed. Why don't you let everybody know a little bit about yourself, your background?
Okay, well, my name is Jen Hebert. And I was born and raised on Long Island in Nassau County. I'm going to keep this brief. I met my husband when I was at Tufts University. We both got our undergraduate degrees from there and a graduate degree, which I have in early childhood education. And he is a man from Maine. So when it came time for us to start our family, we decided we would want to be close to one family or the other. I always say that I won because I couldn't take winters in Maine. So we moved to Long Island, but the idea was to move to Long Island and find the most New England town that we possibly could that had that charming kind of small-town feel to it that he was so used to growing up in Maine and still close enough to my parents. And that's how we ended up in Huntington, and we never looked back.
Yeah.
And then just a little bit about me professionally. As I said, I'm an educator. I have taught public school education. I have worked as a nursery school teacher with three-year-olds. And then I took over St. John's Nursery School as the director. St. John's Nursery School is a really lovely nursery school right in Huntington Village. And I ran that nursery school for nine years. And then, at the same time, I was also a Board of Education member in Huntington School District. My husband Jamie and I have three boys. We're very proud of them. They're all grown, and they all graduated from Huntington High School. And so while they were there, as the people in this room know, and many of you out there probably remember, we had a lot of trouble in our school district at one point. And one of our local schools closed because of some violence that was in the area. And by closing that school at the time, the administration and that Board of Education at that time really caused a lot of discord in our school district. It overcrowded our classrooms. We accessed 70 staff members. Yeah, it was brutal. And worst of all, as I always say, we basically turned our back on this community and said to the people that lived in this community, you know what? It's fine for you to live here, but we really don't want our kids to go here. And that, I couldn't live with that. So even though it was a very contentious time to run, I ran for the Board of Education the next year. And there were five of us running for two spots. The sitting board president at the time also ran, was rerunning. And I won the most votes. And myself and Adam Spector got on the board at that time, at the same time Jim Plains became superintendent. So it was kind of a, you know, perfect, like, sort of the planets aligned. And we worked hard to get the building reopened. We did it in a really thoughtful way. We didn't throw the doors open. We made sure that we, you know, included all the stakeholders and spoke to the students and spoke to the parents. And ultimately, as you know, we reopened it as the STEM Magnet School, which is like a treasure of our school district today. So I'm really proud of the work that I did as a school board member. And I think a lot of those same skills will come in handy if I get that spot at the town board table.
I agree. I agree. That's great. So what is the job description of a town council person? And what is the town board exclusively responsible for?
Okay, so in brief, a town councilman or woman.
Person, yeah.
Person, town council person is, there are five members on the town council. There's the supervisor, and there are four town council people. And each person has a vote. And you very much represent your community in issues of policy and budget, but also making decisions about how our community is going to grow and, you know, progress into the future in terms of environmental concerns and parks and green spaces and roadways and things like that as well. And so I think it's a really important job. And I think, you know, there's a lot of, obviously, a lot of noise out there with the federal and national elections and politics. But the truth of the matter is that a lot of what affects you every day in your house, in your neighborhood, on your street, are affected by who's sitting at that town board table. And I feel strongly that I will do a great job of representing the community. So I really hope to have a chance. It would mean the world to me.
Yeah, so like, I would say, Diane, what would you say? 90% of the questions and issues people bring up in Huntington Matters community forum that they comment on are all totally have to do with the town council and the town board and things that are under their purview. So as residents, we have a lot more influence on how our town is run if we pay attention and vote for the people that connect with our family, like every year, right? You think? Great. All right, great. So what are some of the short-term and long-term things that you are passionate about that you would like to accomplish during your time on the town board?
Okay, and I, these, I know we're going to cover this again and again, but truthfully, what I was hearing most at the doors, and it did not matter which part of the township I was walking in, were concerns about development, overdevelopment of our green spaces. And then on the other side of that coin, the fact that it's really unaffordable to live in Huntington. So those are issues I'm ready to tackle right away. I think I have some really innovative solutions to those problems. Obviously, I'm one vote of five, so I would need to work constructively with the other trustees at the table. But I really think that we could do this in a thoughtful way that would bring value to our community and to our neighborhoods without taking away from the things that make our neighborhood so charming and the reason we all want to live here in the first place. So the first thing I would do is I would stop downzoning so many of our properties. I think that when the developers buy the properties, they buy them knowing how they're zoned. And there should never be this assumption on their part that the town is just going to allow them to downzone them so they can make more money.
Right. Explain to what a downzoning is.
So basically, what you'd be doing is you'd be taking a piece of property that was zoned for, say, 20 single-family houses that all needed to be on a one-acre parcel of property. And instead, you'd downzone it and you'd say, okay, instead, we're going to put, instead of the, this might be an exaggeration, but not in some cases, instead of the 20 or 40 individual houses, we're going to put up 190 townhouses. Which not only is, not exactly what neighbors in that area are often looking for, because a lot of times, you're talking about then putting these townhouses very close to the neighbor's property lines and putting more housing than, you know, was originally intended for that space. But you're overtaxing your school districts, your first responders, and your infrastructure. And those reasons alone, I think, should really be a cause for concern in our neighborhoods because we don't want to see something, we don't want to see our infrastructure fail when it's too late.
Right.
And that's going to be a huge problem if we continue to put up so much housing. And I also happen to know that, like, on the Park Shore property where they were talking about, you know, taking that lovely day camp, and that's, I think, where they were talking about 190 townhouses.
Yeah.
But they're also talking about then having to put up a sewage treatment plant that they're looking to get a variance for so that it can be really, really close to the neighbor's yard.
Yeah, that was like, really? You could have totally picked a better design scheme for that.
Yeah, that seems like a slap in the face to those neighbors and also very tone-deaf to what I'm hearing all over the town from people who are very concerned.
Yeah.
And then on the flip, I know I'm going on and on.
No, it's fine.
On the flip side, I would like to see affordable housing because I think that, and I know people go crazy when they hear that phrase, "Don't go crazy." What I'm saying is, I think there are places in Huntington where we could find a way to offer housing for young people like my 20-something-year-old sons, or older people like my 90-year-old dad, or people who are making a single salary. Because Huntington benefits from having people of all ages here. We also benefit from having people in all stages of their life. And we want to be welcoming, and we want to have a vibrant community and continue to be vibrant and innovative. So my suggestion would be to look at some of the empty commercial spaces and work with the developers to turn those into some housing that would suit people who are just starting out, or people who are looking to downsize, or people who are really managing on a, you know, on a budget, which many of us, I think most of us are to varying degrees. We have people in Huntington that are really struggling to make ends meet. And I don't want them to have to leave Huntington simply because we've become too expensive.
Yeah.
So I really think that to partner, there's that beep, to partner with the developers and encourage them to see the value in being partners with the town and not adversaries, to really work with them, to understand that there are things that they can help us offer to this town that we really need and that our community really needs.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the developers, it turns into a little bit, I don't, it's not even a little bit, it's a legit strategy from the developers where they will present the most dense, over-the-top version to the community. And then when the community comes up with, "Ah, you know, we don't want that, we don't want," then they go, "Okay, okay, we'll scale it back," and they'll take out so many units. So there's like an A, B, C, D. But, you know, as a resident and going, we'll be talking about the Huntington Station redevelopment also soon, you know, we're looking at some of the projects that were submitted through the downtown revitalization initiative. And it just angers me that a developer comes to us with a four-story building.
That's crazy.
It's like, the town zoning is three stories. Like, I just feel like that's something that, you know, as a community, as our representatives, we could send the messages to the developers and say, "Look, stay within these parameters," you know? And then we'll start there instead of all that. So, next question. Okay, how will you, how will you partner with school districts as board members if elected? This is an important one because you're the only candidate that has school board experience.
And actually, it's one of my favorite questions I can get asked because I would love to partner with the school districts and work on all kinds of ways that the town and the school districts can work together to both improve our communities but also to support our students. I really love the idea of internship programs. I would love, because I, you know, when I first got on the Board of Ed, the idea was we were going to get these kids college-ready. But as we, I was there, there was a, there was a transition to realizing that not all kids need to or should go to college. Some of the kids would be much better going a different way into the trades. And frankly, I think the trade jobs are some of the best jobs that we have to offer at this point. And during the pandemic, if it didn't become clear to all of us how important those jobs are, then people weren't paying attention.
Right.
Because of all the jobs that needed to still keep showing up, those were some of them, the trade jobs. So I think we should really be working with the school districts to get kids both college and career-ready. And I think that the town, in partnership with some of the local businesses, and I'm a really big fan of small businesses because I was raised by a father who started a small business that's still around today. I think those small businesses, and small and large businesses, but also Town Hall itself could offer some great internship programs. And I think I would like to also work on connecting the school districts with the trades and the labor unions so that they could work on, because I know that they love their apprenticeship programs and they are always looking to expand them. And I think that they're a treasure, and I would like to see those expanded.
And like, why, I'm trying to think. I don't think that the schools encourage the kids to take the civil service exams either.
They don't. And all of those things would be a great step. There's no reason that people should feel like college is the only step for kids once they graduate high school. I think that you're doing kids a disservice that way. And I think you, actually, you're disrespecting a lot of really good jobs out there.
So like, I'm going to go off script for a second. They're already giving me eyeballs over it.
I know, because I talk too much.
We don't have anybody scheduled after her, so, but this is because we have an opportunity.
It's gonna be a while?
We have an opportunity because.
Hope you guys are comfortable.
You were on the school board.
Yes, I was.
And you were president of the school board too, right?
I was that too.
So we were just talking to Jillian, and 65% of our taxes go to the school district.
Yes, they do.
So as residents, they come, you know, we all feel it, you know, that how much we're paying taxes and everything. But we also feel, and tell me if this is true or not, there is a disconnection between the town board. Like, we're paying all these school tax dollars, and you can see where the police are working with the town board. You can see where your fire district working with the town board.
Yeah.
You can see all this stuff, like, the county and the town are collaborating on things. But it feels like we send our money in, and the buckets go to the school district over here, and they're totally separate from what's happening in town. But to be part of our community, I feel like there's got to be a way that we can increase and improve relations so that it's more of a dovetailed relationship instead of silos. Do you agree?
I totally agree. And unfortunately, I don't even think it's always just been silos. I think that there have been times in the past where the town board and the school district boards have been at odds. You know, we were always frustrated in Huntington School District that we weren't looped into things sooner. Because there was obviously, you know, a lot of housing went up in the Huntington Station area. And we welcomed every possible student into our building. And I will say that, I mean, there was not a student that walked in there that we weren't ready to serve and do our best by. That being said, it would have been real helpful had the town looped us in so we knew how many, how many developments were going to go up in our part of the township, or how many additional students we should be expecting. So one of the things I would love to do in terms of partnering is to make sure that the school districts are one of those stakeholders that is looped in really early, like, as soon as a developing, as soon as somebody comes to the town and says, "Hey, I'm thinking about doing this in this part of the township."
And building a certain, maybe a certain number of units you need to let in.
I think that school district and those first responders and that civic group, or those civic groups, should all be invited to the table so they could hear it out before anybody goes through a lot of work and a lot of trouble figuring out what they're going to do. Let the people who actually are affected by it have a say in it.
Yeah, that's definitely a vacuum right now. Like, the community doesn't even know until it's like public hearing for zone change, and we don't really know.
The other thing I was.
Basically, what we're doing in Melville, the Melville.
Yes, and that is, and they've been, and in Melville.
The town is very connected with.
Yeah, the town's doing a great job.
They are. They definitely are.
Really, with the Melville redevelopment.
I agree. And I think that's partially because the people in Melville, first of all, have always been really reasonable about putting in mixed use and doing things like that. But the other thing is, they made a lot of noise. They, and, you know, you're looking at a grassroots person, a community person. I really believe in the strength of the community coming together and, you know, uniting their forces and going to advocate. And I think that's part of what, you know, has resulted in such good, a good outcome.
Yeah.
I wanted to just circle back about one thing, and I swear I won't keep talking so much, but.
That's okay.
You know, and I've been pointing this out at different things. We do a great job of educating our kids on Long Island. That's largely the reason that people move to Long Island or come back to Long Island is that we know that we do a great job of educating our kids. We spend a lot of money to do it, obviously. So to continue to really do a great job of educating our kids and spend a lot of money on it, and then have them not be able to afford to live and work here and take all their skills off of Long Island, I think it's a shame. And it's one of the reasons I really would like to tackle that issue of finding other ways to offer housing, because I don't want to see Long Island become a place where only older people or very wealthy people can live here. I really want it to be a vibrant place that's welcoming to everybody at all stages.
Yeah, and then statistically, there are, there is a mix of, like, basically, for a blueprint for a healthy community, is a mix of housing styles. And like, a certain percent should be single-family, certain percent should be, you know, rentals, disqualified, you know, like townhome rentals, down to workforce housing, down to affordable, down to low-income. So there, it should be, and Huntington is definitely has a disparity.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and we also have a concentration of rentals only in one hamlet.
Right.
As opposed to spreading it out across the other hamlets. So the fact that Melville redevelopment is going to most likely be adding rentals. And then we have Matinacock happening in East Northport.
Yes.
That's great. Elwood has added a few senior, but there weren't rentals for those of townhomes. But anyway, so basically, it's something we have to consider because everybody wants this goal. You know, we all have this need where my kid's 23 and 18, and they certainly can't, even if they go in together, two friends, and they rent a two-bedroom or rent a three-bedroom, they can't afford the rent with the salaries the way they are. And the salaries are way higher than any salaries we ever paid.
Absolutely.
Because minimum wage is so much, is so much higher. So it's, it's an issue, and.
That's if they can even find a place.
Yeah, and that, and I have thought on that, but I will not tell them.
The other thing is, there's a scarcity, obviously, of any, you know, any real local housing.
Yeah, I'll tell you right now, the pandemic and the way New York State treated landlords, that's the reason why you have no apartments right now, because landlords are not putting their necks out on the line to go through that again.
Right, who wants to go through that again?
And lose absolutely everything and be held hostage by the state. So honestly, anyway, all right, so where were we now?
We digress, so we'll get back to the.
These are town councils, that's another one. We have four, four town council candidates. You may be hearing that multiple times out of my mouth. All right, so we're going to move into the development and housing conversation, which we've already touched on.
Which we've talked about a lot.
But what we didn't talk about is the town board's influence over development, planning, zoning, and projects. Now, the town board, right?
Yes.
So the town board is the governing body, but then there's the planning board and the zoning board.
Right, and the zoning board.
And the town board, right, stop me from wrong, appoints the members of the planning and the zoning board, correct?
They do.
And they serve certain terms, and they get whatever, re-upped and changed out and whatever.
Right.
But the town board members don't see all the projects that come through, correct?
That's what I understand, which seems ridiculous to me. I'm not sure why the town board isn't getting those projects first and foremost. And again, as I said before, one of the things I'd like to see changed is the process by, because I think that you need to include those people much earlier on.
Yeah.
It's not fair for the people to just be here and now, that there may be 190 townhouses put up on that Park Shore property after the property's already been sold. And it's, it's just not, it's frustrating and disrespectful, and it doesn't even do the developer any favors because then he's gone ahead and done whatever he's going to do, all to find that.
Get through this board, and then get through that board, and now you're here.
Right, and now there's people showing up, and they're angry, and now it's on hold.
Yeah.
So why not make it a process that's actually workable?
Right.
And thorough, and also something that I really value and valued on the school board is transparent.
Yeah.
You know, if you want people to trust that you're making the right decisions for them, then be upfront and honest and forthright. Otherwise, how can you ever expect anybody to really trust? Because there's going to come a time that people are going to disagree with the decision you make, no matter how good a job you do, no matter how, you know, much you are in agreement with them. Eventually, you're going to disagree on something. And I really hope that, like when I was a school board member, that I will have the respect, if I get to the table of town board, that I would have the respect and have been transparent and forthright enough so that when people disagree with me, at least they respect that I've made the decision for the right reasons and done my homework, you know? And that sometimes you have to agree to disagree, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I don't think that's the way that people feel about it right now. I think they feel really suspicious.
Right, and town board sets the legislation, you set the parameters for the planning board and the zoning board, and then it's kind of like, here you go, here's your playbook. And then within the boards, they can make their own decisions.
Absolutely.
As long as it doesn't exceed whatever, and they can do their variances within a certain limit and all that stuff. But that is something that I think our community really wants to be looked at.
Yeah, I think both those, those boards need, I really do think they could use fresh eyes looking at the way that they're run because I don't think they're functioning in a great way right now. I think they're, unfortunately, I don't think they have the trust of the community. And I don't think that they're, frankly, I don't think their process is transparent enough.
And to be fair, if you were to start a project today in the town of Huntington and put something in to be considered, it will take a minimum of five years before it's built. So the things that you see going up right now.
Yeah, are from passports.
Are from Chad Lugnacci's.
Right, and to be.
Purview. So like, and then, so people see it now, and they're like, "It's mint, it's mint."
Right, but it's not.
And like, literally, he had nothing to do with it. This current board had nothing to do with it unless there's members that are from the far board. Okay, so that we're getting.
And just to tag on to that, to be quite honest, that was true of passports that had, you know, Democratic majorities and passports that had Republican majorities. Both sides have kind of failed the community in this respect.
Yeah, agreed. All right, are you in favor of piercing the tax cap if elected?
That's such an easy question for me. No, I'm not in favor of piercing the tax cap. We never pierced the tax cap as a school district, and we always managed to make it work. I don't think we need to pierce the tax cap, particularly since I happen to keep hearing about the fact that there is money set aside for projects that is just sitting there. Until we are using the money that we have to the best effect for each, getting our best bang out of each buck, it should never even be considered piercing the tax cap. People are, people are struggling, as we said before. You don't look at your budget and say to yourself, gee, we have a deficit here, let's lay it at the feet of the taxpayers. That's not the way, that's not why you get elected. You get elected to make the hard decisions. If I have to go in there and look at line item by line item by line item, I will do that. That's what I did on the school board.
Yeah.
So no, I'm not in favor of any piercing of any tax cap.
Okay, very good. And then, what is your vision, as we mentioned, with the Huntington Station redevelopment? We have this opportunity with the downtown revitalization initiative, which is going to be sparking development, and we have sewers coming in.
Yes.
So that's now going to make it viable where these tiny lots of land that couldn't expand or renovate because they didn't have any place to put their waste, now they're going to be able to go up, like Huntington Village, three stories max. That's what it's on, C6, three-story mixed use, so retail on the bottom and residential on top. So how, so what is your vision for that? And how do you protect the community from over-gentrification?
Yeah, that's a tricky one, and that is my biggest concern, actually, because obviously, you've seen it happen in places like Brooklyn. And I mean, there are plenty of places you can point to where they, you know, did such a nice job of revitalizing it and then basically priced out everybody that formerly lived there. We don't want that in Huntington Station. I want our families in Huntington Station to actually reap the rewards of revitalization. I think that, so my idea would be to work on any project that would actually give back to the existing community. I don't want to see things going up that, that don't give value to the people who are living there now.
Okay, right.
And as you know, because I've said this at most of the things I've been at, to me, the most important thing that they could do right now is the Conti Family Rec Center. It's a project that's near and dear to my heart. Those were my, you know, families, as a school board member, that is my school district. Those are my families, those are my kids. And they deserve that. They've deserved it for as many years as it's been promised them. I know that there's money sitting there just waiting, and yet, nothing gets done. So you talked about, you know, a project that I'm passionate about, and, you know, I never really said it before, but that's the project I'm passionate about. If I did nothing else but I got that done, I would feel gratified and like I had been successful. I would hope to do more.
Yeah.
So I hope to do a lot. But that being said, that's the project that's near and dear to my heart.
And if you, if you don't know what the Conti Community Center is, it's the old armory that's in Huntington Station that's next to Manor Park, Manor Field Park. There's the Spray Park in Huntington Station, Manor Field Park. And then just east of it is the old Armory Building that's just boarded up, essentially. I mean, there are nice new windows now, thank you, and the lead asbestos abatement was done, but that's it. And there's money sitting there, there's been plans, and it's been literally, I mean, we've been involved in the community nine years.
I was thinking since.
We've been hearing about it for nine years, and it was already, it was already dedicated to Mr. Conti in memory of him, at least three years before Huntington Matters started. So this has been going on forever and we still have nothing.
Yeah, I have to say, my oldest son is twenty-six. So he started in the school district, you know, like twenty-one years ago. I guess he was kindergarten student at Jefferson and they were already talking about it.
Yeah.
So I, the fact that it hasn't gotten built is not just disappointing, it's a little infuriating.
Yeah, with the money there too, yeah.
Given how much that community deserves that center.
So we are a neighborhood watch, as you know. And we have worked together collaboratively with the community and our local officials for nine years now to ensure we can have the maximum safety in our community. What can or will you do to make the town safer for everyone? What kind of ideas do you have?
Okay, so I would love to work with the second precinct as much as possible, obviously, inform good relations and talk to them about what they need, what, because obviously they know best of all, right, how to keep our neighborhood safe. But it all harkens back to the other stuff I was talking about too. I mean, first of all, I will say the revitalization, they are talking about adding additional streetlights and things like that, that will obviously, even small things like that.
Yes.
They add a lot of, you know, benefit to the community and a big piece of that is the safety aspect of it. But we need to have stuff for our kids to do, to keep them out of trouble. I really, instead of worrying about what to do once they're arrested or part of the gang, why don't we make sure that they never get to that point? And so anything I can do in that respect, obviously, I'm a person who is, you know, an educator and so the young people, that, that's, they're like, you know.
Yeah, and there are avenues, Project Excel.
There are, there are some.
To school with the town and the town does have some summer things, but if that could be expanded.
Any of that to be expanded. And like I said, I mean, you get a kid a job and a paycheck.
Yeah.
Well, that's a big step towards keeping them out of trouble, frankly. And so again, those internships and the apprenticeship jobs and the community center, those all serve many purposes because not only are they a benefit and an asset to the community, but I think that they're preventative kind of medicine for kids ending up in trouble. So I really would like to focus on that aspect of it just because it's something that I already know a lot about and I have the connections to the different school districts. And I think that we could definitely reach out to the individual school districts too and even say to them, hey, listen, do you have groups of kids where, you know, you're worried about them? You're concerned, I, you know, they know, they know who's heading in the wrong direction.
Bingo. That's what we said all along, the schools have to see this coming.
No, they do.
You know, before they're, before they're actually wielding weapons on the street.
Exactly.
You know, they did go through the school system.
You can't just threaten them and say, don't do this, don't do this. You're gonna make a bad choice. You need to say, look, don't do this, don't do this. Try, come with me, we're gonna try this instead. Tell me, I got somebody that I want you to meet because they got a job for you here. You got a few hours that you're getting into trouble? Here, I've got two hours of work for you back here. I really, I think that's the way to go. I really do. You can't just tell the kids, don't do it. Obviously, anybody who's a parent, you know, that doesn't cut it.
Definitely. Quality of life issues, they hit everybody. And they seem like, when you take them one at a time, they seem like, oh, why are we even talking about this? Like the leaf blowers, like the noise complaints in the summer. I actually have a huge issue with that in my community, my neighborhood.
I'm not a fan.
After hours, ridiculous parties with the
Yeah.
And you can, my whole house is shaking and you call town, the town, and they're like, nobody's working. You know, nobody's working after eleven, you know? And then they say, call the police and it takes hours to please. Anyway, so there's gotta be, there are things the town board can do. You can make stronger kind of like consequences, like whatever. And that the police can then enact for certain things, like urinating in public or
Well, any of that, I mean, you know, I find nowadays when you walk along the street, you know, you smell a lot of pot smoke, you know, coming from the cars, coming from the person walking ahead of you. I had a person in the neighborhood say to me, look, I don't wanna make trouble with my neighbors, but all we ever get is the smell from that house, from that house, from that house. So, you know, you want people, obviously, to be able to do whatever they're gonna do privately. But when it starts affecting the neighbors, quality of life issues, then I do think it's time for the town to step in. And, you know, it may be that that neighbor doesn't even realize. So maybe what it requires, I often think that if one neighbor were to go and speak gently and quietly to another neighbor in the most respectful way possible, that a lot of that stuff can be figured out neighbor to neighbor. But when it gets outside of that, or if there's a fear that that's not the right way to go, then the town does need to help because these, the quality of life is, that could really impede somebody's enjoyment every day. And that's not fair either. If they constantly can't sleep well or they can't get their baby down to bed at night because there's a party happening every night, that goes, that's not fair.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'd like to look at the employees and, you know, it would always be nice, obviously, to hire more people.
Yeah.
But obviously, in a tight budget, that may not be, you know, a possibility. But we do need to have people for whom their job is to follow up on stuff like that because it does affect people's lives. And, and, and you know what? There are some problems that are solvable.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of times the problems that we have, that we're facing, you know, there are not a lot of great solutions. But in this case, many of the smaller problems would be solvable. And frankly, the leaf blowers, I'm not, I would work, I would be in support of phasing out those dual fuel, the gas powered leaf blowers, both because I think that the noise is terrible.
Yeah.
I think people overuse them. I've seen people cleaning their driveways with them, well, get a broom, you know what I mean? But besides all of that, I've read some articles.
Come up with some restrictions.
Yes, and I think that's helped.
I thought that was fair.
But I think that you could actually transition the town over to entirely electric blowers. And I think what the town could do is, you know, maybe you could come up with some small incentive for the landscaping companies that would help them replace some of their equipment because we certainly don't want to affect local, small businesses. But for the people that use those leaf blowers, they're an incredibly terrible health hazard for those people that are using them all day. It's, I mean, that's my biggest concern is that you're exposing people to terrible, terrible polluted pollution. It's not good for their health, so.
So on the topic of pollution and the environment, our number one issue we have that our members talk about is how we lose access to our beaches in the summer after there's a heavy rain. And it's said that most of that is because of toxic rainwater runoff. And that runs into our beaches because everything's downhill and runs out to the water. So do you have any plans of, or ideas of ways to address this?
Yeah, I mean, there's, unfortunately, and I'm sure people have heard about this ad nauseam, so I'll keep it brief. But there was a chance for us to have this very election to be voting on a referendum for clean water. That would have accessed large funds of money for Huntington to put towards cleaning up our water. It would have given twenty-five percent to extend the sewers, but it would have given seventy-five percent to people like myself who live a walk outside of Huntington Village and still has, I still have septic. Now, those septic systems are old and they're leaching nitrogen into our groundwater, which is then ending up in our waters. And that's what's causing a lot of the, I think it's the nitrogen blooms that cause the die-offs in our water, which is also one of the reasons that the beaches are closing so much. So I think it's a shame that politics got in the way of us getting access to that money. And it wasn't even like they had to give the money to us. The voters were gonna have the opportunity to decide whether we wanted that money. And I think it was a terrible political decision and I wish that they hadn't made it. That being said, if I get in there, I'm gonna go after that money all over again, every which way I can. And one thing that your viewers should know is, I plan, if I get this job, at working this job full time, I'm not going to be working another job. So I would have the time to go and bother the legislators in Suffolk County and to bother our elected leaders at the state level and to, to really advocate for the kinds of resources and, and support that we would need. Because one day it's gonna be too late and then we're not gonna be able to get our water back. And that's going to be a very, very sad day if we let that come. I think people are well aware, whether you believe in climate change or not, we've been having ridiculous amounts of rain come down all at once. And that's also been a huge problem in shutting down our beaches because once that rain comes and washes, as you said, everything down, we don't have a filter that that water goes through before it goes into our harbors, by the way. It goes straight into a pipe that goes right sploosh into our water. I saw the streets in Centerport that all came down, joined here.
Yep.
And then at the end of that street, did you ever see that pipe? It's, I think it was put in like seriously in the nineteen fifty's.
Huge culvert, yeah.
Half broken. So it goes and then there's a broken piece and then there's more of it out in the water. And basically, all it's doing is collecting every bit of pollution and, you know, the microfiber, the micro rubber pieces that come off of our tires and the waste from our pets. And it's just throwing it all into our water.
Right.
We need to stop putting Band-Aids on our problems and we need to really look for some long-term solutions. And I would definitely not only be in favor of that, but willing to champion it. I'm an environmentally conscious person, as you know. I, you know, I have backyard chickens, my husband and I are beekeepers. We don't use any chemicals in our yard for all those reasons and more. Also, I'm an avid gardener and I know, I've got some friends, gardener friends in this room.
You do.
And so those things are all really important to me.
That's great. And then the last question we have on the list is parking. Parking, 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 it's always an issue.
Okay, I'm gonna make this easy.
And in other areas of town too.
I'm gonna make this easy and quick because I know I've gone on too long. I live right outside the village. I ran a nursery school right there on the opposite corner of the library. And when people would come to my nursery school and I would give them the tour, I would say to them, and I'm telling you, you can ask any of them, I would say, I could tell you a hundred good things about my nursery school and one really bad thing. And the really bad thing was the parking. We need a parking garage. I know people are concerned that it's gonna turn us into queens, but I'm telling you that there is a way to do it that not only would it be unobtrusive visually because you can definitely find a spot where you could put it a half a level down and then a half a level up. That is not the three-story, you know, that people are picturing.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we could do something really cool and innovative with it. And we could think about putting solar panels on top of that parking garage or a living roof or something.
A living roof, I like a living roof.
Love the idea of Huntington not just being the town where good things happen, but the town that other towns point to and say, you know what, Huntington did a great thing. Let's go and speak to them because they had this great innovative idea about A or B or C. Let's be that town. And so I really think the parking garage is doable, I would get right on that. And I would, again, like I said, think about doing something innovative with it so that not only are we adding parking to the town, but we're, there's, you know, more for the community, that it would benefit the community even in another way.
I don't, I don't remember which event we were at where one of the candidates said that this was brought up to a public hearing for parking garage and that the community didn't want it.
She's, I, I heard that too.
I was completely shocked. So to me, that is like, hello, everybody out there, twenty-five thousand members, if you want it, if there's something before where they're having a, a, a public hearing about something and you're like, I support that, it is just as important to come out and say that you support something as it is to come out and say that you oppose it. Because if you don't tell them you want it, then you're not gonna get it.
Yeah, and then you're gonna let those few small loud voices in this case, because I really think that predominant, I think if people understood that it could be done in a way that would be within keeping of the charm of our neighborhood, that people would be on board for it. Because frankly, somebody like me, and again, I live really close to the village.
Yeah.
I don't go into the village on the weekends. I don't, and that's a shame, our local businesses.
I do and I never have a problem finding parking. I'm telling you, it's insane. But I don't go like during Paramount, Paramount show hours, but I really do.
And then that's one other thing I wanna add about the parking is, and I'm glad that you brought up the Paramount because I've walked those streets knocking doors and meeting voters over there and community members. And basically, what I hear over and over again is that the Paramount has caused those neighbors on those streets a lot of headaches because people are blocking their driveways and they're leaving their empty beer cans on their lawns and worse.
Yeah.
And so, you know, while you may be able to find parking, it is affecting our community in ways that, you know, are not great, unfortunately. You know, for the people over at the Paramount, like I said, anybody that lives over there, they were promised that this would be addressed and then it wasn't. And I, just even that alone is, you know, that was duplicitous to tell them that they were gonna take care of it and that it wasn't gonna affect them and lo and behold, it did.
Sounds like the parking garage that they might have used was shot down by the residents. I don't know, I don't know the timing of that, but yeah, we all have to get more involved. Yeah, we have to get more involved, all of us as, as residents. If it's something that's important to us, we have to speak out.
Well, you're living proof here, ladies.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. That's it, and I think we're right on time. Everything worked out perfectly and so early voting has started.
Early voting started on Saturday and it's continuing through next Saturday or Sunday, I forget.
Diane posts that every day. We have like four or five, five locations in Huntington.
Right, and then Tuesday is Election Day.
Right, exactly. So then Election Day is Tuesday, November seventh. So get on out there and
Yeah, I'd be honored by your vote and, you know, please get out and vote, most important of all.
And now you got to know John a lot better.
Yes, thank you for your time, everybody. Thank you.
Bye-bye.